Forward to the cloud. Okay, let's do that.
We are back at the regular session of the Riddick City Council on Monday, November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five at five thirty P M here at the fire stations. It is five forty-seven P M and we now have our technology working. Ah, we just completed number six, which is proclamations and special notices. And so number seven is public comments. Do you have any public comments?
I already checked.
Nothing online. Number eight is departmental community reports at the library. Kathy Most, our professor, amazing. Get an extra in my title. Um, I just want to say thank you um for inviting your colleagues to come in and do a little bit of sharing. Um, that's great thing for us. Um, and have that opportunity that everybody hits that in other towns too. So we are grateful. Um, I sent a short report. I hope you got that in your packet. Um, and then I also um, sent the annual report that we do for you each year. Um, to be honest with you, that for um, wow. Um, if it's anything we do all year long, but it takes us a big month. So um, for us, it's a wonderful thing through the city. They take that information and they make it so that everybody can get at it and we can compare, we can compare to what we've done before. Um, just gives us a lot of insight in what we're doing, what we need to be doing. Um, I'm just kind of know all around where we're at. Um, I also provide this to the county. Um, each year when we do like a county request also. Um, tonight, I just wanted to tell you, um, we were talking about it's been a wonderful summer. And um, I also am adding fall, even though I'm still wondering if we're still in summer sometimes. Um, and just going back to back really a lot this year. We've enjoyed having the extra time to get some projects done. Um, we've been working on everything from the grounds to the buildings maintenance. Um, working on the repairs and upcoming repairs, um, getting all the estimates we need to do that. Um, one of the nicest things we've done this year, and it's gonna sound odd to say it, but it's a citywide corner. Um, you know, this happy citizen is absolutely enjoying seeing what's happening. Um, and we're also enjoying being a part of it as well. Um, we've kind of been working on our um fiscal things that we need to be doing. Um, actually pre-budget type of work that we've been working on, um, adding some new programs. Ah, I would tell you Wednesday was so busy. I know, I don't think I've ever seen the day quite like that. And I thought we were super busy right after the remodel. But um, it's been great to have so many people using the library for so many things. Sometimes we get them stacked on top of each other or they have unexpected turnouts. Um, and so we were all just laughing and kind of knowing we had a long day Wednesday. But um, some of the new programs we've added, we've added what we call a pass program and we'll be adding a lot more passes. And um, we're fortunate enough to receive some different gifts. And we've been using some of the gifts to purchase everything from a local pool pass. So that people can go, maybe that's never been to the pool before. Uh, we've been adding in zoo passes. We've been adding in Durham museum passes. We're working on um, Lawrence and Garden Luminarium. One of the things I've heard in all the years that I've been at the library is there's not enough to do. And so we're working on outings, experiences, and definitely providing some of that. So people get to go, everybody gets to go. I will fast forward that to um, we've also been um, doing some interesting upkeep down of the library. Um, had our concrete lifted. We just had the floors polished. That was an adventure. We uh, lost our, uh, for as long as I've been at the library book supplier. So we had to go through bidding a new book supplier, but we have books, so we're, we're good with that. Um, this should be started an intern program with the high school. And um, we actually have someone who's there and is in um, willing to go into library. So that's very exciting for us to have that and that they're that excited. Um, they've volunteered with the library for a long, long time. So they've decided it's career. The main reason on the passes, the main reason on the services, I think is so fascinating. When I get to my last part here is that um, when we were doing the library project, we did ask the Carnegie Foundation if they were doing any funding. As soon and they said, no, sorry. You know, the initial gift was the initial gift. Um, so we went forth and found money where we needed to find money and went on. But I got an email from them, oh, maybe two months ago, kind of a little survey. And we get surveys all the time. Sometimes I think, oh, one more survey, but we filled out the survey. And after uh, we filled out the survey, a couple of weeks later, we got a phone call that said filling out the survey was a very good idea. Um, because the Carnegie Foundation in celebration of next year's two hundred and fiftieth anniversary, um, has decided to gift ten thousand dollars to the Carnegie libraries. So that's just been a wonderful thing again, you know, what can we do? What can we do for the community? What can we do for the people? So that'll be kind of a new task, but a wonderful task for us to have. And last but not least, um, I have down, um, you know, we, we're constantly cross-training at work. We're um, trying to make sure that we're thinking about the future as well as today. And so um, our higher hand, Shulters, who is currently in our children's librarian position, has been um, interested in getting some additional training. And so she has just finished um, the state library certification program. There's a program, but it gets her accredited to do all kinds of things. Um, and different roles. So very, very excited that we're getting some of that done. Part of her certification will be that she will be continuing at now, going over fifteen hours a year. So just excited and good things. And if we look tired, we are. Um, but it's a good tire, so.
Very happy. How is the tool program going?
Good, very good. Um, we, it's, it's interesting what they come for. But it's wonderful. I um, have a person who's been calling us from Austin. They're gonna put a tool program in, in Austin. So they'll be working on that. We have some hints for them. Um, what they, what were the things we were told program to, but that we had great success with. Um, lots of interest in returning everything just the way that we want it. So that's.
How, how do you do upkeep on that?
It hasn't been bad. Everything's coming back pretty good. So that was my worst fear, that they wouldn't come back. But um, the, the wifi program is a little bit harder than the tool program. But um, our cell company's been so good about working with us on the wifi program. So in case you don't know, there's um, hotspots that can go out. There's tools that can go out. Um, passes that can go out. So any ideas are welcome. Um, please let us know what we can do, that we need to.
We appreciate you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. For those in the crowd, we, as part of our rural readiness housing assessment, after we completed that, we received ten thousand dollars that we used to purchase all kinds of tools that people could check out from the library that you wouldn't want to necessarily go buy for a small project, but they're all available for checkout at the library. And so it's going well. Great. Thank you. All right, now we have an update from Rome Azuna, who is the chair of the Animal Control and Welfare Committee.
Um, not a huge update, but it's the step forward. Um, we are, as you guys are probably aware, we are trying our first step with this committee. It's a new committee. Um, Ms. Shaw is on the committee as well, and we are looking to try to advise the council. Uh, we're looking to offer opinions. We consist of, I would like to thank are some very knowledgeable people on the subjects. Um, as far as animals, animal welfare, animal control. Um, we have a vet tech from the um veterinary clinic across the river. Um, we have a primate keeper from the Henry Dorley Zoo. Um, and he has himself forty years of experience with exotic animals. Um, keeping breeding and running a large facility at one time. Um, but where we are now is Red Oak, obviously. And Red Oak has an issue. You know, we have a problem. We've had some issues as a path. Everyone here is aware of them. Um, with animal control, uh, animals at large. Um, that's what we're trying to help, trying to come to terms with. And hopefully find the solutions that works for the animals, the people, the government, everything here locally. Um, so far, we've decided of the first step, we think the first step would be a survey. Um, we need the public's opinion on that. And we've got the survey um, pretty much done. I would say the final draft will be approved probably by tomorrow morning, I would think. Uh, the draft that was presented to me looked really good, very thorough, uh, but not too thorough to the point that it loses people's attention. Um, so that will be finalized. Um, we hope, we do have um, a couple more committee meetings next month. And we hope to have a completed survey um, with these stats for you guys by January second. And there, any questions?
We're also working on the ordinances.
Yeah, we're working on the ordinances, looking through the ordinances, um, seeing if there's anything that can be streamlined, trying to get the clutter out. If there are, if there is any, um, a lot of the ordinances are, are good, the way they stand. Uh, some of them are a bit convoluted, a bit uh, like a little extra bluff, I guess you'd say, that I think could be toned down, narrowed down, worked around, et cetera. Uh, just to help streamline daily procedures, once again, for you guys, for this, the city. So I think that in the end, when this is all said and done, I think we can hopefully do a service to you guys. To everyone, actually, um, with the city here. So we'll see where we go with it.
I don't know what's happening, but this is frozen up.
It's frozen. I think the through traveling or return type program and ordinance that will help. Cause you cannot put at-large cats in the same category as at-large dogs. Just not, you, you know, we cannot control where an at-large cat wanders. And um, so I think we're working on some of that stuff and defining, further defining vicious dog, some of those things.
Yes, there are some concerns about the definition of vicious animals.
Oh, even at large.
At large, yeah.
I was, I was just reading that right now and just, I seconded that, it makes sense to read that one. Five, one, two, nine, four, animal. It was just been a larger more occasions in twelve month period. Does not mean it's uh, dangerous.
That's correct. And under the current um statute, if I am correct, those animals are set to be put down if they're picked up. So yes, there needs to be clarification for sure. There is a difference, obviously. And that's what we are, we are literally going line by line on these stats. Uh, to clarify this, to try to make it a, a bit more friendly for everyone involved, including our firm friend.
I think we're gonna try to use the tool in a way that's also educational for the community. So they might learn something as they're answering questions. So. Great committee, y'all. Great committee, so. Does have any other questions for Ralph?
Looks like yes, been busy, like, no, appreciate it.
We have, yes, we, we initially started off uh, meeting once a week. And the meetings continued in pretty late. I mean, we were very, there's a lot of very passionate people um, on this committee. So yes, and it's a lot of information is thrown around for sure.
We've had three meetings. Our fourth meeting will be tomorrow. And I've encouraged them all to attend the Community Heart and Soul on Wednesday because one of the ideas or one of the action items on the Heart and Soul plan is addressing the animal shelter, animal pound issue. So normally it would make sense that they would be involved in updating on that.
Yeah, I mean, that right there is what's probably one of our biggest hurdles is because most of the statutes, and if you look at relevant statutes or similar statutes from other communities um, outside of southwest Iowa, um, still in the state, but just some other uh, locations that could possibly offer ideas. Everything is based around a existing facility, which Red Oak does not have, a brick and mortar facility, where animals, you know, issues can be addressed at said facility, and we don't have that. So trying to work around that is going to be probably our hardest task. Is you have to, everything, pretty much everything is written in the sense that there is a facility. If an animal was found at large, it's picked up, it's dropped off, it's held a certain number of days. We don't really have a place to do that, other than the existing veterinary plant. So, which puts a big toll on financial and their time, that they have to deal with that. So, yeah, that's where the, the biggest hurdle is going to be, is, is trying to work around these stats. So they are more so relevant to our specific situation of not having one.
Well, somewhat visionary for hopefully someday have something.
That's correct. Shaw has brought up uh, and it's something I would like to do, um, to possibly visit uh, Atlanta. Uh, she speaks high volumes of, of how they have, how they run things, the facility that exists there. And I, I might go see it. I haven't seen it. Um, but I've seen pictures and it looks very organized, which is a big, huge, I can't even enunciate or stress organization when it comes to animal welfare, animal hazard. Um, so overlooked, but it looks very well organized. It looks very clean. Which is obviously the next biggest thing. It looks very clean. It looks very nice. Um, so definitely something in the future. I think we'll probably take a look at a couple surrounding facilities, just to kind of get an idea of the crap.
I think the goal is to create, it's, it's an online electronic survey. We can print it and have some copies available at the library. It's a lot of pages, but they're just one question per page. Um, and then sending out the link. So it'll go out in the, in the January utility bill or December, if we can get it in there. Um, and then have that link available. It will promote, we'll probably give it about a three-week hopefully deadline and get that, we pull together by the first of the year.
I mean, we look, we're looking to finalize the final draft, like I said, by tomorrow morning, hopefully. Uh, we have it in our possession now. Um, Shaw, good gosh, you put so much effort into uh, the survey itself with a lot of input from everyone. So with that said, um, we will probably start within, at least by this weekend, at least sharing links um, on local social media, which I think is an easy way to get that out there at zero cost anyway. So we'll probably start.
I feel like I need to change that. I think we planned on the council having to approve it before. So one, at least one, Marty. You're okay.
Approve it. Yeah, that's right. But then it can go.
Then it can go, yeah.
If, if it's approved, so.
Absolutely.
Appreciate all your time. Thanks for coming, Rome.
Thank you.
Well, number nine is consent agenda, which includes the approval of the minutes from the city council meeting of November third, twenty twenty-five. Also, the receipt of the minutes for the Animal Control Welfare Committee for ten twenty-seven twenty-five and eleven seven twenty-five. We do have another set. We just don't have them yet. And then November seventeenth, twenty twenty-seven, five claims, and I believe Lisa handed out more highlighted that are in addition to what we had in the pack. So the total is.
Okay, I need to clarify something.
Yes.
So remember last time when we had the bills and then we had the extra bills and something got goofy with you not having it? So when you look at the total, it's the difference between, is it like two seventy-three or four?
Two seventy-two.
And then on the right-hand side of there, it has sixty-three thousand. So the sixty, sixty-four is what you approved the last time. And then the difference between the two is the new bills from this time, and then we had to include November third because the extra bills last time were tagged as a November third expense. So if we didn't use the ones you already approved of the sixty-four thousand, the ones that you missed last time as additional claims would not have been on here for you to approve. So it's the two seventy minus the sixty-four is the actual total that you're approving to me.
Two oh nine, two oh nine, oh six, two point one. So two hundred and nine thousand, sixty-two dollars and eleven cents.
You need a motion?
Yes.
I'll make it.
Bills?
I'll second.
Hey Bradley? All right, I got a first by Bill, second by Bradley. Roll call.
Sprite off?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
He break?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Bills?
Yes.
Right, number ten, and resolution twenty twenty-five dash one forty-eight. This is setting the water and sewer tapping fees. Not surprised to read some of this. Um, so commonly, what the water sewer tapping fees are commonly two hundred and fifty to three hundred dollars in that range for each. Um, is typically connected to both is typically between five and six hundred. It puts our footfalls water be right in line with what others are doing. So uh, what Clint, our, our utility superintendent, I think Chris Baird and Lisa as far as proposing is that we set a standard water tapping fee of three hundred dollars under the Red Oak City Code ninety point oh six. Um, and by approving that amount via resolution, um, it helps to clear up some of the confusion because we did not have any specific real, real good documentation of where we had approved in the process. It also reflects the city's time, the cost of reviewing the application, supervising the work and performing inspections. Um, it helps to clarify that, that this new fee replaces any older fee amount of informal arrangement so that we can move forward with the cleaning system standard. And then as far as the sewer connection permit fee, which is code ninety-six point oh two, uh, we're said, we're suggesting that that remain the same at three dollars per front foot, up to six hundred dollars. Um, and so what this resolution will do is set those fees as described. And give the city staff a little more clarity in what there's, what they're giving estimates to the public. Is this gonna cover stuff like with regard to our rate study and stuff? Is this still in alignment?
I have no idea what that's gonna show, but I need something now because people are asking. I don't feel like I have a good answer. I can't find anything. I can find a resolution that's in the system. So the problem that you had when you used to do resolutions with the previous staff was they didn't assign a resolution number until after the meeting. If you recall on your old agendas, it would never say a number. So it's like a needle in a haystack. For me, if I find a document on, on the computer system that shows we had this two fifty many years ago, but I can't find where it ever got approved. I know the year, I went through every resolution that year and I don't seem to see it. So I can't verify that, and it was like a whole fee thing. It wasn't just tapping fees. It was like charge for police, charge for, you know, hourly public works fees. I can't see where it was approved, so. And then, um, as I explained, there used to be for the Fourth Street, for the Barnett's addition up on the Fourth Street to the east of the townhomes. They actually had a development agreement that said it was one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. And at some point, they came in and asked if that could be um, taken down to nothing because it was being, it was challenging to sell lots and then have to add that amount on there. So they were told verbally with nothing in writing that it was okay not to charge that, and they weren't getting charged that for a short amount of time. So I did talk to Marty and I said, I don't think that's right, that there's nothing. I would say that I think seventeen hundred is high compared to everybody around us at the total of about six hundred, if you did both. And I said, so if this goes ahead, then she'll know that anything going forward. There are two lots that were recently sold that they didn't pay anything. And I said, I feel like in good faith, we have to hold true to that, and I'm not gonna ask them to pay that back for lots that they recently sold. So I guess that's a free pass for those, in my opinion. But this would be clear in here that anything that happened before is now, this is the new one for everybody, whether it's that subdivision. Um, I had some on, you know, there's like someone that bought a, a house, two lots, built a house, but kept it on the one lot. They want to sell the other one. It's on realtors' websites and I can't tell people what it's gonna cost to tap, so.
You know, so just, yeah, I'm sorry, just as a reference, you know, where the community I'm sitting in right now, they have like, by the time you have your impact fees, before you pay one dollar for a building permit, you've got about thirteen thousand dollars in hookup fees, in impact fees. So, you know, we're very affordable in Red Oak, Iowa.
So again, we're not voting on the sewer because that somehow got included as the fees by ordinance. And then for whatever reason, the ordinance for water said set by resolution or ordinance. So that's where I'm struggling with the water. So sewer would stay the same. It's a per foot, which in most cases should be around that three hundred. And then tonight, you would be approving water tapping for three hundred. And then to answer your original question, we'll see what Chip comes back with when he does that.
Does he have, does he have an ETA on that study yet? Do we have any kind of an idea?
No, hopefully soon, but no, not a set date.
Any other discussion? Well, I'd take a motion to approve it. Right off? Lester, now any other discussion? Right, welcome.
Lester?
Yeah.
He break?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Bills?
Yes.
Right off?
Yes.
Number eleven, resolution twenty twenty-five dash one forty-nine is the street concrete repairs. And it sounds like we had Efronak in town the past week replacing some of our street concrete. But there were two patches that were larger than anticipated up on Eighth Street near the um, Hartman complex, I believe. And so, and then the north one is north of Senate Street.
That, oh yeah, that is the north one by the apartments.
Okay. And then I think.
The south is right near Knuckles and the bridge. There's a patch that needs to get repaired there. So obviously, we sometimes have normal maintenance that we just go ahead and, you know, when it's like patching where there was service repairs, things like that, but these were pretty substantial. There's, you know, pretty, pretty good amount of money in the road use, so this is coming out of there. That's what that money's, you know, been given to us for. It's just that this was above what I was comfortable with, Chris and I going ahead with.
The forty thousand.
And they can come this week yet if.
I don't want to get too far off base here, but Chris, what are we, are we looking at anything that are on the center or southern part of uh, Senate Avenue where it's really bad there? Have we looked at that at all?
Yeah, this is, part of this will be up at Senate.
At the Mexican?
Right at the entrance or by the Mexican?
One of the small repairs is right by the uh, roadway end motel, would be words passed out there. Those streets all took a lot of views during that discussion.
Yeah, yeah. All right, thank you. That's what was my question.
Yeah. So that area and then the other one is directly north of Senate. There's a hundred and sixty-eight feet by eighteen. A little bit of curb work on that one, just if it needs it as we go. I mean, the other one is the south approach on the Beryl Street, that's what Lisa said. It had asphalt over it and I kind of looked at it when the crew was in town. And it turns out that it had concrete originally and then they put asphalt over it. So to do it right, curbs and stuff are bad, so we can drain it there, so. Those are kind of the bad spots, so.
So basically, this would be approving fifty-six thousand for all of that work.
For those.
And I would, I would recommend, sorry, go ahead. I would just recommend the sixteen, um, when we finally got the final quote, it was like sixteen four and change. So sixteen five, if you can amend, it's not really amending it, just clarify that when you approve it, you're putting sixteen five, not sixteen even. Please.
Six, five hundred.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Sharon, Bradley?
Second.
Right off. Welcome.
He break?
Yeah, yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Bills?
Yes.
Right off?
Yes.
Lester?
Yeah.
Look, twelve is resolution twenty twenty-five dash one fifty. This is the creation of a utility customer service and administrative assistant position. Um, I, working, having worked in the city hall, I can attest that this position is needed. And Lisa did a great job explaining all that this position will do and help to alleviate on the other staff. I guess I would highly recommend this position as well. Want to add anything else?
Yeah, I, you know, in this day and age with looking to try and hold costs back, I don't take this lightly. It's a hard thing to recommend, but we're just not making it. And we just can't with the way that our community is made up, and like every community is different, so it's hard to say like, what's happening at this city hall or that city hall or this city hall, because the reality for us, the one thing that I can say I knew from when I got here was that the person doing utility billing does not have the ability to successfully do everything that there is and wait on customers all day. Because there's just so many things that you have to do, you have to stop what you're doing and build twenty-six hundred people. You have to stop what you're doing before that and download meters, and then some don't read, so then you have to get a report that says some didn't read, or some say zero, is this a legitimate snowbird zero? Or is this something's glitching out in the meters? There's things that we should be doing to be constantly checking for people that have leaks, like we pay for a software that has this, you know, monitoring alert system that's like, hey, let Janice know that it looks like she has a leak, but if you can never log on to that and pay attention, there's no point in it, and so when you're constantly waiting on customers, so what I know that's different here in Red Oak is we have a high volume of people that still come in. Most communities, I would say, after COVID, people stopped coming in, and then they just got used to not coming in, that really hasn't changed here. So we have a lot of foot traffic. Um, also the fact that we have so many rentals, so if you think about, again, my colleagues that don't have rentals, or it's a normal like five, ten percent of your properties are, those people, you don't sell and buy your house very often, you know, you're in houses for a long time, whereas an apartment can be a constant turnover, so when I compare Bath, who does, I've used her a lot of times, like she might have ten um, switch outs reading out a month where somebody news coming in because somebody sold their house, we have over fifty a month. So just think about entering forty times, like, we are barely paying, having time to pay attention to say, are we making sure that we got the accurate information that we need from that new person or the person leaving? Did we for sure get the address that we need to bill them, do we have time to give them a final bill, which the software now provides? If you came in and said, I'm leaving today or left yesterday, we could generate an, a bill immediately. But when somebody's got two people in line and waiting there, there's no ability to do that. Um, deposits make a big difference, not every city has deposits, we have deposits because of the frequency of people leaving and not paying their bills, so there's a little bit of protection for the community, so. I think it's just after being here for fourteen months, you know, it is an extra expense that we're asking you to approve. But I think that there is no, um, argument in my mind that it will pay for itself by having the ability to be more successful, to do better in collections. You know, the tax lien stuff should be getting sent every time we send a final bill, we send one more, and then it should go right to the county. But when you don't have time to stop doing, stop working and doing that, so. I think we all agree, and again, I, I don't take this lightly, so I hope you know that, that, um, there's that, and then I think what we can commit to is that, you know, there's always reasons for someone leaving, whether that's someone retiring, getting a new job, and I think what we know is that maybe there's a time, I can't promise that, where we get caught up and things are more efficient, and maybe we can go back to what we have now. And we reevaluate that every time that there is a transition to someone not being in a position, but for now we're just not, we're not making it.
Would that be a full-time position?
Yes. Paid by water and sewer.
Twenty dollars now. I was thinking, um, from the money that you've been collecting from all of those past water bills that hadn't been paid, I mean, we get probably paid for that for two years just from, from that, as, as we're collecting that.
And that's why.
Janice, you took the, you took the words right out of my mouth, Janice, I was gonna say the same thing, yeah.
You lose, you lose.
And you know what, and, and I gotta tell you, I've never seen our, our, uh, front office, so to speak, uh, run as efficiently as it is running right at the moment. And, uh, I think that every time I walk in there, everybody is fully employed, I've never walked in there when somebody was just sitting around chatting, it just, it doesn't happen, everybody there is fully employed, so I, I definitely would go along with this recommendation.
Or they're still having to work Saturday and or Sunday, that's.
Well, and I, yeah, I know our city administrator puts in about a hundred and fifty hours a week as well.
Yes.
Probably eighty or ninety, but a paycheck, yes. You know, we were all there on Saturday, like right now, there's a high demand for our December one deadlines. Um, I think by working with Cindy, our consultant, to do bank rec, we're learning a lot that needs to be done differently, but it's just so many things that you, you just can never stop and make things better, because you're just like keeping your head above water to, you know, try to just get done what has to get done, and then, you know, I think my example was there's a firm in town that everyone knows that manages properties, they sent us a list of a hundred and fifty properties that he wants to be tagged to so that he's not the owner, but he's the manager, and we wanna be able to say he's an owner or he's a manager, like, there's no time for that. Like, literally, you can't do it, and then when someone sends you that list and you, you feel like you're failing people, because they sent you the list, and then they're like, wait, we sent you the list, and I'm like, but there's literally no time for anyone to pay attention to just sit down and be able to look at the hundred and fifty, look them up, do we have the right owner on Beacon, do we have that person listed as the manager, like? It's just, you know, and, and getting you these bills, like the extra bills, like, there's no way for Karen to get them ready, because all day people are coming in. And so we're giving you extra bills an hour before the meeting, like, that's not how it should be.
Great, that's, that's tough, but I understand it.
Right, and so to me, like, if we have someone dedicated almost exclusively to waiting on customers, like, they will do other things, but they will be able to deal with all the foot traffic and the phone without the pressure of getting the council bills ready, like, you know, doing utility billing, meet, reading meters, we, uh, even just the level of delinquent notices that we send out, you know, there's four hundred of them. That all takes time, and we're doing really good at getting people aggressively by being aggressive on it and doing it on a very set schedule and thirty-day turnaround. Uh, we're getting people to pay more, to your point, Janice and Brian, that we, I really believe that we're funding it, but to, we can't ask people to work sixty hours a week all the time. It's just not sustainable.
Qualifications, what does this person have to have?
So my goal is to have some accounting background. Um, I encourage anybody, if you approve this, to, we will, uh, advertise, obviously, but one of the people that applied for the clerk's position, um, the finance manager and clerk, uh, I think would be excellent. And I did say to that person when I called to say, you know, we've hired someone with more experience um, that I think would be successful, I encouraged that person to apply, and she said she was super interested, and I think she'd be great, so. That's the good news of knowing you might have a candidate, and obviously, everybody gets a fair shake whoever else applies, but I'd like to flip it around pretty fast.
This seems like you have to, uh, real, you know?
Yes.
Especially when you're talking about making sure that people are managers and not the owner.
Correct.
And that's, that's.
Well, Donna will be, what we're doing is letting this person wait on customers, and the stuff that I just listed will be allowing Karen and Donna to do their jobs that they are intended to do. So this person's gonna be, like, for right now, like, if somebody comes up and says I'm moving in or out, Donna's gotta like try to hand them the application and get the information she needs, and somebody's waiting, so they kinda go here, and they leave, and you quick take the deposit, this way, there's a person waiting on customers, and then when someone comes in to do a move in, move out, Donna's gonna get called up to the front counter. And then let her wait on them separately with no pressure of the next person coming in line. So the stuff that I listed will be to existing staff that are good at it, they just don't have time to not hurry people along, so, the main thing will be waiting on customers.
I also think that it'll help our customer service part of it too, for somebody that's totally involved in the utilities, because that's where a lot of the complaints are, you know, so, somebody that knows what they're doing and, and how to look everything up, I think it's great.
And the job description looks good, so basically what this is, is, um, and we would not, would we continue to have, um, Hannah shelters?
That's the goal, like, let Hannah stay at the library, like, she had to come in, like, somebody was on vacation last week, and it's like the di, two days before, or the week of utility billing, like, there's a pile, and it took Hannah almost all day just to manually enter all those payments, like, so nobody else gets anything done, and you can't say people can't have vacation, like, it's getting to be silly, so. So the goal is, you know, like Hannah right now, I send her a lot of stuff, like, all the minutes that I get for committees, instead of me logging into the website, I ship that off to her, so she can, Kathy is super, is Kathy still out there? Kathy is super supportive, and we appreciate all that she allows Hannah or herself to do. Um, but the goal would be to minimize that with this, you know, but there's still things that Hannah can do remotely and help, which is, it's great that we have the teamwork that we do, but.
They get false event, but it's anything too.
Yeah, charge it a hundred percent to utilities. This is not gonna affect taxes, it just, it's just not, it's not justified without the utility, and Clint a hundred percent believes that this is necessary as well, because he knows he's not getting the attention from the staff that he needs right now, because someone walks in and someone walks in and someone calls, you know, like, we have these sixty properties that we still have uh, non-working shut offs. So even though they're delinquent, we can't go shut them off, well, that requires a letter, and we wanna just do like a mass mailer to all sixty of them, say you have this many days to contact us, but like, you, you just can't do that when you don't have time, so, all that kinda stuff, I think will help Clint as well, and he is supportive of it, and I did mention it to, to be part of the water and sewer rate study, obviously knowing that you have to approve it first, but my hope will be that we can advertise quickly, and if we get good applicants, to your point, Adam, we're not taking it lightly, and we wouldn't hire someone if they weren't qualified, but you know, it's someone that's detail oriented, that knows waiting on customers, you know, a friendly face at city hall, obviously is super important, and then being able to handle looking things up, answering questions, something like that. So this would be approving the job description and advertising, and then if I find someone, it'll be back on either December one or fifteen, depending on the timing, so you'll still approve the person and the final wage, but I would be advertising for the twenty dollars.
Then we'll see where we're at with the year, about this position, again.
I'm just, obviously, we should constantly do it, but I'm not gonna, nobody's gonna take the job if they think they're gonna get laid off in a year, all I'm saying is that we have people that are not gonna work for another twenty years. You know, there's people that are closer than some of the other people to retirement, and so, I just am committed to and the council should be, no matter who's in the position, is if someone retired, say, all right, let's reevaluate this and make sure it's still justified. But right now, I just think it's super critical, I wouldn't ask if I didn't.
You know, and, and Adam, I wanna just talk about what you said, you know, one of the things that, like Janice said, you know, just the extra attention to detail that we've been putting on utility billing and collections, I mean, we've more than paid for that position, so.
I mean, just what we sent to the tax roll is twenty thousand, and we had forty thousand paid just because we sent the tax lien letters. And once we send everything to the set off, which Suzie's been working on diligently, because you have to have a social. So that's why it's not, you can't just flippantly say, here's the list, you have to have a social. And there were some in there and some not, so that's another hundred thousand dollars that may or may, you know, it takes time on that set off, but it's things like that that is part of how you pay for it when you pay attention, have the time to pay attention. And I, you know, I, I tried to emphasize a lot in this document, this is not a reflection on staff. Like, you know, Suzie was in that position for a very long time, and just, there's only so much you can do in the course of a day. And you have to wait on people and get bills out, and so the things that are that way, like, and, and same with Karen, Donna, everybody does a great job, it's just. There are times where.
Okay, your time's off.
Literally, you want, like, and it's terr, like, it's terrible, but you feel like, like, we are trying to get the council bills done. Sometimes we do the old, you have a vocal.
Okay, I'll make a motion. Okay, Lester?
I'll second it.
And he bring? Any further discussion?
Thank you.
I will just say, the staff have worked a ton of time, a ton of hours, for years the entire time I've been, I'd say this from the second year on, uh, they have worked diligently in the office at six in the morning, on the weekends, not leaving until six, eight at night. I don't know that we've acknowledged how hard they've worked and tried to make sense out of so many things that were, we didn't know before, that we've now identified, and so I just want you to know that we have exceptional staff who care deeply about their job, and I don't think that our city realizes how good a hands.
Well, will they, I'm sorry, Sean.
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt you out there, will they also do like a, uh, report to us like, hey, we sent up this paint length of bills?
Yeah, we can.
I, if we're gonna create the position, I'd like to see that also.
For sure, because they'll actually have time to create.
We gotta justify it too, and people.
For sure, yeah.
Okay, that, uh, first by Lester, second by he brings, roll call.
Bradley?
Yes.
Bills?
Yes.
Bright off?
Yes.
Lester?
Yeah.
He bring?
Yes.
The thirteenth resolution twenty twenty-five dash one fifty-two, this is, uh, to approve the Montgomery County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. This is a plan that is done by, primarily by the, uh, Mercy Management Association through SWIP PO, and we updated this plan every five years. It's required in order for us, for FEMA, to approve any type of disaster funds or any type of, uh, disaster recovery or mitigation funding that we apply for. So it is a requirement by the VNR, or, I'm sorry, FEMA. Um, I know we've been pretty thorough in going through it, I think it's better the second time through. And it's two hundred pages, and we're still waiting for USDA to approve it on their end, right?
FEMA?
Or, I'm sorry, FEMA to approve it on their end.
I think with the shutdown, there was a delay, so I did clarify with Danny at SWIP CO that if there was anything major that they came back with, we'd all have to revote, but that's typically not what happens. So this technically is pre-FEMA approval. But she would like to have them done, at her request. And it's a five-year plan. So it's been, at least Adam, Sharon, Brian, Tim, you went to, probably Janice is the only one that would have been on the last time, right?
I'll second.
Bills?
Yes.
Bright off?
Yes.
Lester?
Yeah.
He bring?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Number fourteen is resolution twenty twenty-five dash one fifty-one, this is authorized officials for banking. Uh, this is to add Kerry shelters to our banking, a signers list, also, uh, ship, um, Lisa's recommending that, whereas we're gonna be making this transition here in a few weeks, that we add uh, Denise Lester, Tim, keep Tim on there, and they've identified when my term will be up and his will start, so it would give us still two council people on this, um, even when I am.
So moved.
Bills?
I'll second.
He bring? Roll call.
Bright off?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
He bring?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Bills?
Yes.
Number fifteen is determine special meetings, December first is what's being proposed at seven thirty eight AM, has a date for a state report approval. Um, because it is due on December first.
I do have new update.
Oh, you do?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So it's possible, uh, I talked to Ted Nelson, he's the guy at the state that does everything, it's not a requirement that the council votes on it before we submit it, so he said it was fine for us to approve it that night. So as of now, we won't have a meeting, if anything else comes up that I learn, let's at least say, can you do an early morning on that day, I just think nobody wants to come on the holiday weekend. But I did confirm with Ted, I said, I explained the whole time date, do you need us to meet in the morning, so when we click send on the first, he's like, nope, go ahead, there's no requirement that council, you should approve it. Um, and then the only other thing is if for some reason, because there's a lot of stuff to fix in the conversion and just still that stuff that wasn't done correctly before in the old world, there is a possibility that we need another week. Um, and then technically, the form would be late, but there's no penalty for it being late, so Ted said if you absolutely have to, you could put it in the paper on December third, and you guys could still vote on it on the first, so. Stay tuned, but if I need a meeting in the morning, we can get you together, I guess is the question.
Yeah, on the, the first of twenty twenty-six or the first of December?
December, the day after we all get back, so you probably would be remote.
No, I'll, I'll be back for the first December.
Okay, thank you.
I, I could log in.
I'll let you know, right, I just hopefully don't need it.
Alright, number sixteen is resolution twenty twenty-five dash one sixty-three. This is the annual urban renewal report for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, and I'm not sure what the and is for.
The and is the one asterisk and three asterisks. Because the one is action after Aaron. If he's paying attention over there, used to question whether we had action or not, if it was action, and I didn't like putting approved, disapproved, because it's just garbly good.
Yep.
So we always put one asterisk if we're acting. And then I like to be clear on the agenda, what we're adding. So if you look at the bottom of the agenda, three dots means it's the added item. So that's why the word and, and is not the agenda item, it's just the two asterisks, see what I'm saying? So I'm saying one dot and two and three dots. Yeah.
I'm confused.
Basically, it's the item we add.
I'm just joking, just a joke.
So the annual urban renewal report is required to be submitted every year on December first. It basically summarizes any TIF activity that we've done. So this year, the Lorette project was added, obviously, there's nothing financial. Um, that was where we found that typo, so we fixed it before we send it, but it's really just a report of what we spent. So of course, this year we spent money on the co-op. We spent money on the D U R, getting their seventy thousand a year. And then this was one year in between where you had the White Sparrow Building getting thirty thousand a year. And now in the future year, it'll be the catalyst grant building that Randall and. Derek are working on, on Third Street, so that'll start being a thirty-three thousand five hundred dollar payment. Uh, and then Lorette's, again, we won't pay now for another year or two, but. So we'll have. That to submit, we were able to get it done over the weekend, which is why I amended it yesterday, and we can get that sent off.
A second.
Bradley? Any other discussion on that? Roll call?
He breaks?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Bills?
Yes.
Brightoff?
Yeah.
Lester?
Yeah.
Number seventeen is the neighboring communities discussion regarding the EMS cost. In a meeting that is gonna be held at the scanty meeting community room on December second. Uh, with those communities, representatives of those communities, we've been talking about needing to do this for ever and a day. So several years, appreciate, uh. Chief Bruce and Lisa getting that with, the letter is in your packet, I didn't see anything, I think it looks great.
Yeah, it's already gone out, it was just in case you hear about it from any of the neighboring people. But just remember that fire is mandatory by state law to be provided. EMS is not mandatory. And so we certainly get revenue from people that we scoop up in the ambulance. When they are outside of our fire district, our rural fire district, but there is no revenue coming in, so kind of our explanation, not going in with like. Blaze the trail, know how much we want to get. I think everyone knows. Um, from everything that the chief says that it is important for everyone to help contribute. So the way I'm kind of explaining it is there's insurance. And there's some basic costs by having full-time op, uh. Paramedics available to respond to anywhere in the county. There's that level of, you have a vehicle, you pay insurance, you have a barn to keep them in, things like that. And then there's obviously the added expenses when we send people out, and that we certainly bill people for, but I think. The message that we want to say is if you want us to keep coming, we want to come. But we need some level of financial contribution to be able to help pay for that basic level. And they do have a choice to say yes or no, but it's just sort of this unwritten, we get dispatched and we go. So this would be adding a level of twenty-eight E agreements and people can choose, and then. Uh, the goal would be that regardless of what they decide, we would be telling them that if you choose not to pay us. Perhaps it's something like June thirtieth on the next fiscal year, so we want to talk about it now before they're approving their budgets. We would be asking for payment on July one. To be able to start paying, so they've had plenty of time, and if they choose not to pay, then that's them saying to their residents, like. No one's gonna come because it's not our obligation to respond to all these non-paying places, and so that's. You know, I think everybody knows about it. Um, but it is a challenge of being a very large community compared to the rest of the county. And so it's also Emerson and Mills County, the top of the letter doesn't say Mills County, but. Uh, so it's being sent to Grant, Coburg, Valiska, Stanton, Elliott and Emerson. Are like what chief says are the main communities that we get dispatched to. And then Glenwood, interestingly enough, is having a similar conversation, so somewhere in the course of my letter going out. Mitch from, he would be, uh. In the same position as I am in Glenwood. He got a hold of my letter and said, we're interested in this conversation because we really need to address the same thing. There's, like, one of their examples is Malvern, where everybody's gone in Malvern, and they were like, hey, you guys just need to cover it for us, and. Is it really fair to the taxpayers of Glenwood that that's happening or for us? And so we're not trying to. Break the bank on any of these communities, maybe it's a gradually increasing amount that gives them the opportunity to kind of think about it, but. We had it in Stanton so that it's on, you know, it's not here that we're asking them to come, kind of more centrally located. Uh, we asked the mayor of Stanton to host for us, so we'll see how that goes, but I, I don't think the letter is coming as a surprise. From what the chief says, people know.
You know, this, this conversation is long overdue, uh, you know, we deliver a. One hundred percent first-rate EMS service to our, our entire county. And it, it's at a considerable cost to the citizens of Red Oak Iowa, so. Conversation is long overdue.
So just information for all of you. And we'll report back, it's December second, I did ask that Shawna, if you're available, but I'd like Tim, since that'd be under year-to-year. Uh, and then. Um, Carrie, I'll ask to come if she's available, and then myself, and then chief. So we asked each, you know, bring your mayor, your clerk and your fire EMS people. We will report back.
Number eighteen is discussion on the sale of the obsessive city dirt.
So, I know this was a hot topic back in the day before my time, but we, in our opinion. From the staff's perspective, we have got dirt that will never leave our facility, like it's. And we don't know that there is going to be a sale, but I felt like it was. A high enough conversational topic amongst this group that it made sense to at least converse about it, so we're not saying give it away for free. But there are some contractors that have been approaching us or indirectly us. About potential projects that they have where they would actually pay for it, and we wouldn't give it away.
Yep, I, I was, I completely disagree with this premise and I'll tell you why. First off, the, the, the citizens of the community paid to have that dirt haul down there so we could store it. For the sole purpose of raising up lots and perhaps developing lots that were in the flood zone. That need mitigation for things like that, so to sell it to a private contractor for a discounted rate, and we're talking about. High-quality topsoil here, we're not talking about junk. So I completely disagree with the premise of getting rid of that. We, we stored that for a reason, we paid for the transport of that for a reason. And that's all I have to say about that. I'll vote no on that for sure.
So I do. It is not top quality topsoil that's at the shop. It is stuff that most people, when they take it, Brian, do not think there's any thing good about it, it is. Uh, it is, it has to be only used for things that are like very substandard fill. And we're not talking about selling it at a discounted rate, we're talking about. The potential for making well over what we paid.
Uh, once again, that, that's what's stockpiled down there for our flood zone, uh, improvement and flood mitigation, I, once again, I'm, I'm opposed to that idea. You know, wh- all we're doing is we're, we're, you know, we would just be doing a solid for, for a for-profit organization, not for that, sorry.
It's just hard because I think that we feel like this could literally be like. Decades of dirt sitting there.
Man, it's not, it's not harming anything sitting there.
I also, I was gonna suggest that we reach out to all the people that have paid for the, the recent lots that we did, and if. If any of them wants any.
They've already been told them. Everybody that wants it knows that they can come and get it.
And, and, and once again, you know, the, the amount of lots that have been sold in the flood district of people that may want some at this present time. Is insignificant compared to the number of lots we have in the flood zone.
And we have to pay, so the other thing is we now have to pay somebody, we like, we don't have enough. Like, we don't have big enough trucks to get.
No, if you want, if you want dirt, you come get your own dirt, we're not gonna deliver dirt.
So what I'm saying, I'm saying that the townhome dirt. Needs to get out of the townhome area, like, we have to get rid of that as well, and that is better dirt than the stuff that already got moved.
And, and not until that area is developed, but not until that area is developed. It's not hurting a thing sitting there at the present time.
Well, there is some erosion control issues over there.
Man, you know, a little wadding will take care of that.
And I knew that Brian would not agree, so it's, that's exactly why I'm here.
Yeah, well, once again, I'm, I'm opposed to the idea, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, so we need to hear from the rest of you, what you think, I. It's just, it's a huge pile.
It is. And then we're talking about, I feel like they, that, that's going up on new vision, that dirt needs to calm down too.
Right, so that dirt, you know, keeping that dirt.
Right.
Seems to make sense. But the, you know, and, and I think we paid twenty-some thousand dollars to move that. If we sell it for what we believe someone is willing to pay and wouldn't sell it for less than that, you would get. Overdouble that amount.
The, the, that's not the point, the point was it was gonna be their first citizens to use, to abate flood zone lots. That was what we approved that expenditure for.
But we're still gonna have that capability, correct?
Well, I mean, you could still have the townhome dirt, right? I mean, maybe, Chris, maybe you need to come and talk, but a- again, from a quantity perspective, I just feel like, and Clint the same.
We don't even have the study done yet with the Iowa State. That's what I'm saying, we might have to wait on this after the study's done, to see where we're at and what those, uh, when Iowa State comes up with. Recommendations for those homes that live in the flood plain or what they can do.
And even the development of the creek.
We have to hold on a little bit, we can hold on, but.
Is the dirt for the townhomes, will that be put in a separate pile as better dirt? And if we got rid of this, then we would just do another pile when the phases, uh, as they come. Uh, be completed?
I don't really know where we think that we would put when we have to move it.
You know, when you say the better dirt, you know, none of this is bad dirt, this is all good, filled, clean fill. None of it's expansive soils, this is all good filled dirt, so.
Well, I'm just going from what Lisa said that was.
Yeah, I understand, I understand, but it's all good fill, none of this is dirty, none of this is deleterious, it's all good dirt.
Brian, it's fill, it's not top grade.
Yeah, that's the dirt up at the townhomes, which if anybody's driven by there, is about fifteen feet from the last house they built.
We had to move it so that they could build the last town.
Now, we moved about, we hauled dirt for a week, just trying to get enough room.
And if we want to make those last presentable, I feel like. Near you's presentable, that needs to be moved.
I'd say there's probably half a year as much dirt up there, a bed of dirt. The only opportunity, I mean, there'll be other opportunities people might want, but. I know this particular project is gonna be bid in the next, in the spring, the way it's out, there's not where this person that was interested in. Possibly purchasing some of the dirt. We had to move dirt for four or five days just to get so we could put the fence in down there, so. Um, we've had some people come get small amounts. To build up some of the, you know, not necessarily whole lots, but to build up lower areas around the homes, but.
How about the levee?
And, and we haven't even got started yet, we're just barely getting started with, with renovating and developing that area in the flood zone. We're just getting started, we have no idea what the need is gonna be down the road.
For just, remember you approved the rock to go on the top of it, but that's.
At one point, there was an idea that we were gonna have to actually raise part of the levy, but. Last I heard, we're okay on that, because it wants to rock, so we're probably not gonna raise it. But, uh.
Well, we got approached, so. Is the answer no, or?
I think the answer should be that we should discuss it later, table this for right now.
I, I agree with Sharon, I'd like to see what the Iowa State. Uh, comes up with their findings on the board. But I also understand that it is such a large pile down there, and now you have a little pile that's gonna build up. With the compost on top of it, and then now I could, now that. Rusted by the. Log, hardwood pile, we also have the big chunk of dirt there too.
Right.
There's a lot, we got a lot.
Yeah, and that's, that's, that's today, that's today, but that might not be the case five years from now, or ten years from now. That's today you're talking about.
Alright, so we're gonna table that, for now.
Just not gonna sell it if someone asks, that's.
Alright, number nineteen is reports, reports and comments, uh, city administrator.
The mayor asked me to put these on, but there's nothing, uh, we are meeting. The week after Thanksgiving. With J E O about water. And then we'll be meeting again soon with sewer, I think they went after their Clint meeting, and we're making some adjustments. Um, I'm hoping that once Carrie starts, that I'll be able to pay attention to the EPA grant, it's just, it's just not enough time. Um, I have the, I have the sample from Kansas State, the TAB group. I did reach out to them again this weekend just to see what they can help, but they, you know, no one can write it for you, and so it's hard to. Get it all in a, an area. The Rural Housing Innovation Grant, I did have a conversation with Omar from ISU, they may do something slightly different. Than what they originally planned, they had talked about having just professors working on it this coming semester. And then have two students here all summer. The professors that are assigned to this may want to still have a class of fifteen to seventeen kids that actually work on it in the semester. And so instead of spending our money on like, two kids coming here all summer, it might be that that housing money gets spent on. Whether we try to house them in certain places, and they just, they have no idea if they would come for like a couple of weekends. Where they would bring a big chunk of kids, but I think they think it would be valuable for all of them to work on it, so. Omar just called and said, do we care? And I was like, no, we don't, like, what's the difference? Whatever they think is best to get it done if the same outcome happens, so they just. Kind of checked in and I said, let us know once you, once the professors have a better plan. So that may, and I would think it would just mean stuff being done quicker. So, I didn't think we'd be opposed to that. And then the same with J E O, you know, they're just. We sort of asked them to not go blaze the trail until we had the opportunity to receive the grant money. Since nothing could be spent, so I think we got a twenty-five hundred dollar bill out of that forty-five thousand, forty-six thousand, so. They should be able to carry on with more work now. I don't know, Mayor, if you have anything on the safe streets, I don't have anything for that.
I posted on my mayor page, a link to the resource page that NAPA has up. Where you can actually go out and use their interactive tool to see where all of the accidents have occurred in our community. We have three times the number of accidents as other communities that are participating. Or I should say, three fatalities. Um, whereas the other communities didn't have any fatalities at that point, um, but I think it's up to date, it's based on current traffic data. So it's just kind of a cool tool to look at, um, and we've had a number of accidents on Fourth and Highway thirty-four now. Um, I did talk to chief about if there was a way we could do some kind of a signage or something as you're approaching. Thirty-four on Fourth Street, he said it's almost like, I've watched one of them happen and the other one sounds like it happened the same way. It's almost like you come to the stop and you don't see either the car. You stop and then you leave, you, you go and if they hit it, or they don't anticipate how fast they're coming, so I think that is.
What did you ask the chief?
I asked him if there's a way of looking at putting some signage before that approach. To say, be sure to, I mean, fast traffic, something like that, so he was gonna look at it. Yeah, by that intersection of thirty.
You know, I don't think it's, you know, the traffic flow has not changed, I mean, the speed limit is still the same, I think the deal is now there's four lanes.
Yeah.
They go across instead of two. I don't think they look far enough.
Yeah.
So, so, but.
So I think that was it, I think you're, you're getting close, um, I'm not a part of the group anymore, but. Um, I think they continue to have meetings, they're having a meeting not in January now, but in February. And then they're gonna be getting close, and this is a planning grant, so then they'll apply for another grant that will actually be an implementation grant, so. And this was a national grant program, um, for, from the EPA, E B A, I'm sorry, E B A, um. So, just a great way to improve our safety.
That's all I have.
Municipal officials training, we have staff, our new council people going to that.
So Levi and Terrier both, I needed to ask you if you were gonna go to any in-person or whatever, but then I'll get them both registered. And then I haven't heard anything more about the ninety day requirement for all of you, so it would be both of you, and then Janice missed the deadline by a week. Darn it. I guess ours for.
No, it's not a big deal.
So if you weren't in office on July one, but it, like for Tim, if you're switching positions, like, you're, you still weren't elected official on July one, so you're exempt. And then we'll have to look at, see who gets appointed to any new positions come January one, when the new council gathers and puts anybody new on a committee, once with Tim's recommendations or whatever, so. Then they would do the same, but the one that they put out there from, that, it was full in like thirty-two seconds, so they haven't said anything else, although there's some more stuff coming out with the league that, that maybe there's other people that can be, um, sort of certified to do the training. Like, it had a list of like, your training has to include this. And so maybe there's a possibility, but I was gonna reach out to Mickey, but it's ninety days after you take office, and so. Um, those two are definitely fine, and then I.
The M L A training, it's the three-part series.
Yeah, that's what they're signed up for.
Really valuable, even if you've served before, I think, we all thought it was very valuable, so.
So, yeah, we have them.
And the city does take that. Um, health insurance update?
So I, this has been another big project, taking my time, but I don't even know how much all of you understand, but I feel like this was worthy of conversation. So we have our Wellmark plan, and then Janice, probably you were the only one when we voted on this. Do you remember that we have this secondary policy that seemed to have been addressed by past administration, approved by the council to when you were getting bigger increases to try and increase your deductible, which would then lower the cost of it, but you were trying to make up the difference towards employees. Well, we have this plan that in all my cities that I've ever worked in, I've never heard of such a thing. We can attest that when we go to the doctor, people take your card and look at you like you're handing them some foreign language card that doesn't mean anything to people, and it's very challenging. So what we're doing right now is, as a city, we provide a policy that is, uh, called AM First. It's administered by Morgan White. And it's a secondary policy. So you hand your second card, and then it is supposed to cover things, so we have like a high Wellmark deductible and a lower employee deductible, which is super common in the public sector, that you have this gap that you're trying to cover for your employees. And so this hundred and twenty-three thousand dollar premium that you've been paying for, for like five years presents two thousand and one. It'll be the fifth year coming up. Um, I don't know that anybody ever asked before, but I asked last year when we had our agent come, and of that hundred and twenty-three thousand dollar premium, they covered forty thousand dollars in claims. Pretty darn good deal for them, and not for us. And then, uh, so they knew that I wasn't happy about it back then, but I had literally gotten in Red Oak. I was here for like three weeks when I found out about it, and I was like, well, Suzie obviously told me, but I started to grasp better, and I was like, this is not a wise thing for me to come in here and feel good about asking you to change it, so we've been staying tuned in for the last year. This year, we're closer to sixty thousand dollars in payments on behalf of our employees, which is still a super unwise way to invest our money on behalf of the community, on behalf of the employees, and everything else, so, um. I was gonna say something else before that, so.
What's the worst-case scenario if we div- divested this?
Well, that's gonna be my recommendation at the next meeting, but I'm giving you some background, so. The thing that's good about that policy is that it's a set amount that the city has to pay. Oh, I know what I was gonna say. So the other really bad thing that I even hate to admit out loud, but that we have a plan that discourages anyone to go to the hospital here at Montgomery County for any sort of specialists. So if you're like, like I would see Liz, um, or now I'm gonna see Kelsey, so they're like, their primary office is here, and that stuff is covered. What's not covered is when they say, oh, you have to see a kidney specialist, and they come here once a month. So why don't you go see them here? So your employees don't have to drive to Omaha. You're encouraging specialists to come here because they're filling their slots when they do. Well, for us on this plan, one of the exemptions of getting it covered is if they're not billing you from their primary location, they don't cover it. So that is to me like one of the worst parts about it, on top of, why are we spending a hundred and twenty-three automatic thousand dollars to spend forty or sixty on behalf of the gap that we're trying to cover? So where I knew that I was going from all my other cities that I've ever worked in, and most of my colleagues, is that you do, uh, um, you basically get a third-party administrator, and then you self-fund whatever that gap is. So that's where it's unnerving to people, because there's always a higher risk, because of, of course, there's no gap, right? Like, the one-twenty, even if they're only paying forty, like, we never have to spend more than that hundred and twenty on Morgan White. So what we've done over the last ten days is I did change agents last week, because I felt like the person that we had before just kinda kept hemming and hawing about it. And then I found out the premium that they were getting, like, they get, um, an agent's dollar amount that's pretty substantial, and that just, it made me feel like there was this conflict between, are you telling us what's best for us as a city to provide to our employees, or is that beneficial to you? So we changed agents. Um, I made that change a week ago, and within the last week, what we did was we asked every employee to log into their Wellmark account, because I don't wanna make a bad decision or a bad recommendation. You're obviously making the decision. So everybody had to go in, like, we're not looking at their HIPAA information, but you can't get this side of Wellmark. So we basically have everybody logs into Wellmark, you can see all of their claims, but we just asked them to clip the bottom of their information that shows, these are my five family members on the plan, and this is what they've spent so far in twenty-five, so that we're making a good recommendation to you based on twenty-six. So in the last week, everybody was rock solid, awesome, appreciate them doing it. They were super impressed that we got it done so quickly, but this is what we learned. So, um, we want to recommend, again, this will be in December that we do this, uh, probably at the December first meeting, but we're gonna recommend increasing the deductible to Wellmark. So you wanna make sure that you're doing that based on people not hitting it, even what you have right now. So we have a three thousand and six thousand dollar deductible for single and family. We're probably gonna recommend, again, needs to do a little bit more analysis, to go to five and ten thousand dollars. Based on the fact that, again, if we go to this third-party administrator, we recognize that there's a risk that if everybody hit their deductible, and we had to cover all those gaps, like, it would be a travesty, but it's not, it doesn't ever happen that way. Like, nobody has a, you all get hit by a plague, and everybody's at the doctor, and your community shuts down, and we're all hitting it. So they felt like when they were gonna tell us, number one, if we drop Morgan White, we instantly save a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. And then if we increase our deductible, what amount are we gonna save in paying Wellmark automatically? And then risk that gap that there's more people, right, that could reach their deductible that we're gonna cover by hiring a third-party administrator, and you pay them like five thousand dollars a year to just do all your bills. So they get linked to your Wellmark account. They can see everybody's stuff. They're linked to our bank account. They send us every Sunday a report that says for employee one, five, and seven, there was a claim, they met their employee deductible, but not the Wellmark deductible, so you start paying. Okay, so that's where we wanna know that we're risking or not risking what. And so, so the, the two numbers that we're looking at are if we increase the deductible to the five and ten instead of three and six thousand, you're gonna save a hundred and five thousand dollars off the bat. And then by getting rid of Morgan White, you save a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. Those are significant dollars. So then, if we're gonna spend that money on behalf of the employees, where's our risk, right? So, for everybody, for us to spend that money and break even, eighty percent of our employees would have to meet their deductible. Like, that doesn't happen. It's like, literally does not happen. So we thought, okay, let's come back to the council and say, let's just use a conservatively aggressive number at thirty percent. So when we did all these reports that everybody gave us, we are at ten percent of people even having a dollar towards their deductible. We have a hundred, and they call them belly buttons. We have a hundred and thirty-seven belly buttons on our plan. So we have forty-four employees that take our plan, but if you take everybody's spouses and kids, it's a hundred and thirty-seven. Only thirty people have a dollar towards their deductible. That's a hundred and seven people that we insure that don't. So, we believe that we'll come back on December one and give you, uh, recommendation to go to Wellmark with a higher deductible to, um, hire a third-party administrator called Advantage Administrators. There's two that I've worked with in Iowa. One was called Auxient, and then one was called Advantage Administrators. Advantage Administrators is a lot cheaper on our front end. You pay like five dollars an employee per month for them to do all of your bills, which is super cheap. Um, but I think it's two things. One, it is spending our money wiser, right? Like, I'm not gonna come in here and say we're guaranteeing spending less money, but we're literally spending money that goes straight to the health insurance companies, and we're literally telling our employees not to go here. Like, those two things are a bad combination, in my opinion. Like, I did it myself. We all know Suzie's, you know, does HR. We're like, well, thanks, like, for the kidney doctor coming, but don't go there. Drive to Omaha. If you need a dermatologist, go to Omaha. And like, when I talked to Ron Klaver about that, it's like, what? Like, well, that's what our plan is right now, so we're wasting money if we don't do that. So, the one thing that you also have to, oh, and we also got our premium increase, which is sixteen percent. So a year ago, it decreased by sixteen percent. So now we're back to what we were even up with two years ago. So that amounts to forty-four new thousand dollars. If we were to.
Is the increase based on claims or just a, a normal increase?
Uh, it's based on a combination. It always is, though.
I see.
So, the sixteen percent, like, so remember that our plan year is January one, but of course, our fiscal year is July one. So we're always approving a budget with what we know for the first six months, and then we don't know what's coming the next six months. We did factor a small increase in, not sixteen percent. So if you look at what we need to fund this year with the increase, it's half of the forty-four, right? Because we're in the budget that only takes us to June thirtieth, so we need twenty-two extra thousand dollars. But if we change our deductible, we're again saving our money smarter, especially like, we were like, alright, we're gonna recommend to the council, like, thirty seems, you know, conservative, but let's just make sure. And then when it came back at ten percent, because we do have a fairly young crew, we have quite a few single people. I think there's fourteen or fifteen on a single plan. Like, they just don't go to the doctor because they're not unhealthy, and so we'd be spending smarter.
We got them on high deductible. Can we, like, work out HSA plan with them too?
Um, I don't know that we wanna switch the plan in our first year 'cause that's a little bit different. I wanna just keep it where we just spend it differently. So the other thing that I was gonna say is, you know, we tax for that, of course. So when you have a self-insured, partial self-insured policy, you also have to remember that there can be blips, right? Like, so if we are used to ten and a blip year is thirty, you have to be able to accumulate some dollars in that fund. So what I'm looking at is like, for one year, instead of potentially having an increase in taxes when we approve the upcoming budget, because we know this forty-four thousand dollars is at least on the table. Um, we should be able to absorb that, and at a minimum, keep it level, and hopefully even a small decrease. So if you had something that needed to increase, you could decrease that part a little bit, and then build up a bit of a kitty because you do need to know that, like, that's the risk, is that you never know what year you're gonna have. Are you gonna have ten percent utilization of your deductibles, twenty, thirty? But there's a potential if they utilized twenty percent, and remember, and that's with increasing the deductible, getting rid of Morgan White, and twenty percent of the utilization happening, it's a three hundred thousand dollar savings. Significant.
Wow.
So I feel like there's no choice but to do it, but I do like, and that's where I really liked these new agents. I've worked with them before. They just feel like the kind of people that are always looking out for our best interest and like, helping us maneuver the plans. So to your point, Adam, I think there's potential for us to look at other plans, but I don't think that we wanna try to do all that at once and not have apples to apples. So we'll bring it back on December one, because we just wanna look at some more stuff. Um, but I think this helps us, like I said, we don't have to increase any expenses next year. If we do that because of the increase in rates, we'll actually bring our rates down. So just perspective is, I think this year, right now, we're paying between fifty-five and fifty-six thousand a month for health insurance for everybody. And like, the new rate would have been around sixty-two thousand, so that's where you get kinda that, you know, four thousand eight a month, times twelve months, you get to that forty-something. Um, but what I'm excited about is, like I said, like, there's the potential for savings, but let's at least spend our money more wisely, and that at least it's benefiting the hospital here, it's benefiting our employees, and it's not eighty thousand dollars going to an insurance company. Like, and I'm sure at the time, like, people felt like that was the right thing to do when we were getting higher premiums, but now that we have real data, it's just not, it's just not wisely spending our money, so. Be prepared. If you think of any questions, let me know, but, um, this is kind of only a week in, but we're very thankful for the employees to get on there, and quickly, we kinda did like a step-by-step sheet for how to log in and get it to us, and everybody was much appreciated that we could get them to do that, so we truly know what our number is. If you have any questions, let me know about plan on that coming back next meeting.
Um, as far as my report, I haven't taken, I'm putting the report together and written for him for a long time. I planned to do that before my last meeting. Um, but I did spend a week at, in Nashville, at the National Rural Ethics Developers Association. It was my sixth year on the Board of Directors, my final year. Um, I've been a member since two thousand and five. Um, so it's been my twenty years there, um, served in many capacities. But what was interesting about this, the conference, was they had several site selectors back, and it's always interesting to talk to the site selectors, and I've, I've done site selection for a company that, that's what we did. Um, data centers are still a big deal, and because they use so much energy, it helps to generate a lot of economic development. We have a data center in Stan, which I don't think people ever really acknowledge that we have one, and it is a really great advantage for us being in southwest Iowa. Also, they said that it is going to be general, AI is changing industry and manufacturing so much so quickly, like, they can't even anticipate it. Um, but what's, what's interesting is, you know, we've been pushing to get one gig fiber forever. Now, it's twenty-six gig ponds. Twenty-six gig. So the fact that Red Oak is set up to be able to have ten gig is huge. So I just think y'all should be really grateful that we, we have really great service with F M T C, what they can do in the future with that. But still, twenty-six gig ponds to be able to help support your future manufacturing, that's significant. And it just goes to show that governors in every state were pushing to get one hundred, one hundred, so that it would get fiber. But after you get the fiber, all it is is a change of electronics components. Um, the twenty-six gig, I found that fucking interesting. Also, I learned, I had to go clear to Nashville and learn about a pilot program that's happening here in Iowa, and it actually happened with Shalimar, uh, one of my colleagues over in, it's advanced southwest Iowa. Um, there is a pilot program for EMS. I'm saying that, and they all left the room. It is basically a program where there, uh, the lieutenant governor has established it through the Empower Rule Iowa Program, and it's working so well that they are trying to implement it across the state. And Lieutenant Governor, uh, would like to come and visit our community. She was pretty excited about some of the things we have going, and I told her how awesome we are with having ten full-time firefighter, critical care paramedics. What this program would do is it would, it would equip people out in all parts of the county that could respond, that are not working necessarily for us in our EMS, but they would be able to respond. And so when you would call a specific number, it would go through our dispatch. It would go out, and then people closest to that incident respond. And so what they found is that people are responding within one to three minutes out in the middle of the country. So it's just, it sounds like it's becoming a really solid program. It's called, uh, uh, Iowa United or something like that. I've got the information. I just didn't bring it tonight, but I will share that. Um, and we can get the Lieutenant Governor here. I think that'd be great. Um, I gotta take some tours and learn some more downtown redevelopment initiatives that are happening in certain communities around the Nashville area, and just what's happening in the, in business and industry. And as we know, like, Target is starting to lay out. Wendy's is starting to lay out, and, and close stores. I mean, they're, they're closing stores, so, you know, it's interesting what's happening. I, I personally don't shop online at the time, but I don't understand why we're using so much retail. Retail is still an entertainment. It's still something that you go do, and so making sure that we're continuing to build out our businesses that are niche, that allows people to wanna come here is so critical moving forward. Um, anyway, I just found it interesting. See, council, do you guys have anything? Adam?
Yeah, I did holiday extravaganza.
You did a mind find.
You were fabulous.
Yeah.
Anna White, you look so.
I never.
It was fun. I also went to the, uh, Swift Open House. Just fun. I also went to the, uh, Swick Open House. Uh, we had, they had over a hundred people show up. Uh, I don't remember how many people from the Swick campus came down, Billy Crafts. Mr. So and the time that they spent getting their house ready. Uh, our chamber did a fine job with getting through the air and advertising it. There's just a shame that nobody from those. Administration for school board membership. So, uh, if we wanna continue that to grow, they also need to show up and, uh. Promote too. But I'm done.
Janice.
Well, like all the runs of us, we, uh, I thought, I think, and, uh, election day. Came and went. Um, I also did the building trades open house. I think that was really interesting. Uh, we had our special meeting for our new hire. I, I actually took tickets at the holiday ladies night out there and that was just. That's fun. It was a lot of fun. Um, we had, um, the Bombard's Open House. And, uh, I always plug in the theater, we, uh. Gail called us and said, when the. Girls went to state volleyball that, you know, school and she said, can you, can you, uh, make it work that there's a. Movie for the kids. It just happened that we could. So we had. All of the daycares pretty much come and watch a movie that happened and that was fun. And then this past week, uh, mission production came and. Saw a movie. So we're always grateful we can help them out and it's fun to be able to do that. A lot of times that's us, we hire people, but. Gets to do that, but it's okay.
You also had intimacy.
Oh, yes, I did. Thank you for inviting me.
No problem. Uh, we had building trades open house. Beautiful home there. Great for somebody that. Get moved in there. Uh, also special council meeting, hired Carrie. Y M C A board meeting with the Bombard Urban Cutting and.
Sharon?
Um, well, I've been laid up for a couple of weeks, but I just wanted to give kudos to the. The Country Club for being chosen the top eighteen hole golf course in the state. I think it'll. Bring a lot of destination, um, travelers to Red Oak and. The renovation's been going on for a couple of years and the course looks beautiful and the clubhouse. So. I just think it's great that we got chosen. And it should be a, a really a good marketing tool for Southwest Iowa.
Um, Brian?
Other than our special council meeting, I have nothing to report. But you guys moved a little fast earlier and I would like to just. Throw my, uh, kudos to, uh, Rome and his entire team. You know, it's, it's rare to get people to volunteer for positions in general. But then to get people to volunteer for positions that they know they're walking into a challenge to begin with. Uh, I have to just really commend everybody on that committee. So. Kudos to Rome and his entire group.
Thank you. I have one thing I forgot to mention. Um, the townhomes, the first building, the first five units, they are. Hoping to have occupancy on December fifth.
Cool.
So he is going to get with both the Ryans and nail down a date for an open house. So that should be coming up here the very first of December. And if you drive up there and look, um, a number of them are very much enclosed down. So they're gonna be doing all their inside work. And there, it looks like they're pouring the last bits of concrete. So. Those last thirty three are gonna go pretty well. I know they want to have all thirty three done, um, by April or so. So. Anyway, that's exciting.
I do have a couple more things.
Okay.
So reminder, um, on behalf of the chamber that there's lots of activities over the Thanksgiving weekend. Kind of check everybody's, their Facebook page has a good. List of everything Friday nights, like a five thirty to seven thirty with the lighting. The tree and Santa. And then Saturday, and that's the, I think the carriage rides are that night and then the. Fire truck drives people around on Saturday. And the Sat-, yeah, I think that some of that's on a Saturday. And then. Strategic planning. I think that it was successful last year. I don't know that we need to do the personality part again. But I think it would be good and. Um, I am in communication with Karna that we could maybe have the same person come back. And then looking at, I would like to think about maybe doing it December twenty nine or thirty. Which is the week between the holidays and the reason we did it last year was so that Adam. Could be there when he's off of school. So I'm gonna put it on the agenda for the first. It's like the Monday, Tuesday between the holidays.
Do you know when they're doing Toys for Tots? And delivering?
It's sign up right now and no, they don't have delivery dates because it depends when the Marines get you their stuff. And there was a question as to. Whether with the government shutdown, that there was gonna be some sort of a blip with the Marines. But I think we at least had an application to fill out and. It's super critical that we get that. Donation as opposed to just our local ones. So. Anyway, so look at your calendars on the twenty nine or thirty. Uh, and I'll have it on the agenda. I'll work with Karna. Again, maybe it's. Two thirds of a day this time instead of a full day. But I think for those of us that were there last year, it was good to. Kind of just get a good list of things we want the staff to work on. So.
And some type of an update from what we've accomplished over the past, I guess.
We got stuff, we got stuff. I keep looking at those two things under each of the four categories and I'm like, I feel like. Like we've done pretty good.
Number twenty is just a reminder of the Community Heart and Soul event on Thursdays this week. On November nineteenth at six P M at the Wilson Center. So encourage everybody to come to that. Our next two council meetings are December first and fifteenth. Um, and then Brian and I will be done. Um, I don't know if we may end up having to have a special meeting before the end of the time. I'm kind of being planning that that might happen. We'll see. Um, and then any discussion of any other upcoming items? Alright, so with all business being done at seven twenty three, we adjourn.
Have a great Thanksgiving, everyone.